Let us remain standing and remember our servicemen and women, especially those that were recently involved in the air attack in Iraq and Syria. Thank you. Trustee Corrigan?
Yes.
Trustee Malone?
Present.
Trustee Althberg?
Present.
Trustee Sutherland?
Present.
Well, thank you. The next regular meeting is scheduled for July 12th at 7:00 P. M. The next workshop is July 26th at 7:00 P. M. And the discussion in regards to changing the Monday, August 2nd meeting until Monday, August 9th. That's due to the public hearing schedule and Mr. Magrino not being able to attend. Is that good?
And Ms. Alpert, huh? That's much better. I actually won't be able to attend the workshop on 26th either, but I'll be able to come to the Monday meeting.
In the past, workshops have been suspended this summer. Is that anything that we could consider this summer?
Oh, two for two?
Okay with that. Okay?
So you're talking about this July 26th workshop? Oh, and the August workshop?
Well, that will be at the end of this season. Right. I'm just talking about July.
Well, they're trying to schedule it. So the July 26th workshop?
Close.
Cancel?
I'm in favor of it.
Okay.
Let's hope you have a ton of people.
Cancel the July 26th? And then the August?
The August 30th.
August 30th?
August 30th is that fall on Labor Day anyway. I actually missed the Labor Day.
So then you don't have a meeting until September?
Or the 2nd meeting?
No, September 13th. Leave a day. Leave a day a week. No, we push it out a week if we then...
But we have August 9th.
We're going with the August meeting, but the week stuff.
Yeah, you're gonna have the August 9th meeting.
Correct. September 13th, so about 38.
Oh, I get it. Okay. Okay, and then the September 13th?
Mayor, what's the Village Board workshop in August?
It's being canceled.
July 26th.
So that would be canceled, whoa.
Is there something that needs to happen before we get to the workshop?
No, I was asking if we can...
Oh, okay.
The 23rd of August or 30th?
That's what we're discussing.
That's because we...
August 30th. Mayor, when's the Village Board workshop in August?
It's being canceled.
July 26th.
So that would be canceled, whoa.
Is there something that needs to happen before we get to the workshop?
No, I was asking if we can...
Oh, okay.
The 23rd of August or 30th?
That's what we're discussing.
That's because we...
August 30th.
Yeah.
Right, August 30th.
Right, so if anybody has a problem with that, of course, we'll conduct August, you know, Village business. If there needs to be a meeting for a reason, we will be serving the village.
I'm available for the August if necessary, but if we want to cancel it, we'll go back to whatever we're...
And it needs to, like in the past, we've had these workshops right before meetings.
We can do that.
Before as well, if there's a reason to workshop before.
All right, so that's it, then we're going for the 26th? August 30th? Meeting on the 13th of September and a meeting on the 9th of August. Possibly workshop the meeting before.
27th of September, then we'll backdoor and go on the schedule. They'd have a workshop.
Yeah. Okay, everybody's good?
Yep.
All right, Chief Koffler?
It was pretty well, miss. Here, there. Good evening, everybody. Uh, first item is two new members from the volunteer host company, Bolt Over 18, William Alter and Eoel Weinberger. I'm gonna skip number two for a second, go onto number three. Uh, we were requested to provide coverage to the Orangeburg Fire Department on July 24th from 11:00 A. M. to 6:30 P. M. So you will have a truck or two over there, they have some kind of fundraiser going on. Uh, the new truck is making progress, hopefully it'll be in paint either this week or next week. The vehicle purchases, I had two vehicles in the capital projects for the year, but I know Mike mentioned something about the COVID money, do we know where we're at with that?
Yeah, I can fill the board in a little later.
Okay. So, okay, that's fine, then I'll bring it up later. And then the last item which I skipped was training. I'm not sure if everybody was, probably don't know, but the Rockland County Fire Training Center has complete disrepair. All the buildings have been closed, there's no burn building, there's no tower building, we have nothing to drill on down there. We're at the point now where we have to go locally, Sacred Heart School, because that's empty, to conduct drills. The Pyramid Fire Department went out and purchased a burn container, which is like basically a ship container, and it's got foam inside of it, which so you can continuously burn and burn and practice a live fire. Just something to possibly think about for the village to purchase, and maybe have down at Bumper Hill, or if we can find a spot for it for future training. Because at this point, the training center is looking for two to three years to get any buildings up and running.
You just got $4 million worth of money.
Yeah, it's gonna take about two years.
Yeah.
How big of a container do you think?
It's a shipping container.
I know, but there's different sizes.
Um, no, I...
20?
What's that?
20 foot?
No, I don't have an answer for that. It's just something we're looking into, but it's costly.
Just the container, a straight container, nothing in it?
It's a container, but it's, no, it's got like rooms sectioned off, it's built for fire departments.
It's built for fire.
Yes. Yes.
It's a shipping container, okay.
And the Village of Pyramid, who's actually a smaller village than ours, smaller tax base, went out and purchased one for their department to do the sold-in.
Can you get the info?
I can get the info, I know that it cost them between $25,000 and $30,000.
I have a question, I know that... If you guys can borrow this building?
Yes, Mawa, we reached out to them, we can go there, $65 per person.
I mean, we provide them, you know, services, I think they...
It's not Mawa's facility though, it's Burton County. It's in Mawa, but it's Burton County facility, and we tried and they want $65 per person.
Can we use Pyramid's?
Okay, bro. I called to them.
Does Paulman still have one?
No. I've been to the Burton location in Mawa, where my son used to be involved in Boy Scouts, they had a... There, if you will, so they got to see the whole thing going on, the fire, the... And I can reach out to my contact that, you know, used to run, still runs the Boy Scouts, might have some contacts there, I feel like...
I mean, I've been in touch with the Burton County Fire Coordinator.
I was gonna say, you know, it's a Burton County facility, I feel like if we work through Mawa, that we might be able to...
Another option we did pursue, they gotta pay for the trainers and the personnel, they want $65 per, we've tried, I mean, if you have somebody you can talk to, by all means.
I think Pyramid would be a good start.
We'll try, we'll try and talk to Pyramid. Just something to keep in mind for the...
I feel like if they're not gonna help us, we should no longer help them, and we should put it on... You're saying to Burton County that, you're saying to Burton County, you're agreeing Mawa, it's Burton County... I understand that, but I'm saying, we provide a service, and they need to provide us a service if we're in need of that service. It's called, one hand washes the other, and it's called making a deal, and I think we need to try to make a deal, and I'm more than happy to spearhead that.
I think initially, try Pyramid, and get into an interval agreement possibly with them, some kind of co-sharing, possibly, I don't know.
Okay, I'll talk to them.
Chief, how mobile is this unit?
It's not mobile, so we would basically pour a cement pad and keep it on it.
So we can't have, split the cost with Pyramid and it comes here a couple, you know, weeks alone?
I will, I will get more information on it, what they purchased, I will send it to all the board members, I will also talk to them about... Some kind of agreement possibly sharing with them or using their...
Okay.
I just feel like we have the municipal arrangement with Mawa, so this system requires, and I feel that they should, deals, coordinate something in the...
We have that throughout the county here in Rockland also, you know, so I'm saying, let's start with the county, that's what I would say, and then if that's not viable, then reach out to Mawa.
Okay, that's all.
All right, thank you, Chief. Okay, next up, we have a presentation from Seth Mendelbaum, excuse me, and write us an update on the Avon project.
Mayor? I am, and that was, slide that, you know, a month ago, we found a very hard copy, and we're not doing it anymore. Mayor, also my copy?
Sure.
Slide is ready to show. I just drew a copy here.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board, thank you for putting us back on your agenda this evening for an update. Seth Mendelbaum from the Color Goldberg and Staff, who represent Avon, with me once again, Josie Adams, who is the Vice President of Research and Development, and Team Leader for Avon North America. Her office is right down the street, the Research and Development Facility, on Lockwood. Michael Katz is also, he's an actio corporate asset advisor, they are real estate advisors for Avon and all of their property in New York. Last time, we'll be for you, and I'll ask you to flip to the second slide, which just to, for everyone to all know where the Avon facility is, right down the street. But the second page does an aerial view, and the property highlighted in red is the nail enamel parcel, or nail enamel lot, as we've pursued in the past, in our past discussions, where they used to make nail enamel, quite a few years ago, since, as you know, Avon's been in the building about 100 years. It's now just used for storage and warehouse pit purposes. And property is just under two acres, and as you may remember, from our discussions previously, we had a couple of Zoom discussions earlier this year, and of course, going back before the world went upside down, we had a lot of discussions about Avon's desire to sell off that parcel. We went so far as getting the planning board to approve a subdivision, to subdivide that off from the main R and D parcel. There is still a pilot agreement that goes back to 2003, from the IDA, the Village of Party 2, that's open IDA, and the school district, Towne, which facilitated the construction of that R and D facility, 2003, and all the job creation and retention that went along with that, which is why the IDA supported that project, as well as the Village and others. And we did have a potential buyer, the village was a potential buyer, but for various reasons that all fell through, and then unfortunately, we all suffered through the pandemic, which hopefully, not fun, I don't know if you're aware, we're coming out of and looking at better times ahead. So, as we told you back on Zoom in March of 2021, Avon has been working to sell the property for residential development, which we received a very positive response from various village representatives. The Avon Commission, Minno, Wasco Architects, if you look to some of the additional images, you'll see this conceptual site plan that we showed you back in March, was based on some input from Mayor and Deputy Mayor. Includes 40 public parking spaces with their own entrance on Suffolk Place, it's fully parked, this concept shows 174 rental units with parking for all units. It's got a six-story building, two levels of parking with four levels of apartments above, and really was the architect taking the property, looking at what was done with the Sheldon as far as density and height, and trying to come up with a concept that worked for the site. Very conceptual, the developer, who we hope to enter into a contract with very soon, they have a slightly different vision, but we told them the things that are important to the village that they trust, particularly the public parking.
Can, I'd like to write down how many parking spots per apartment?
You're asking for math.
So is it like 1.5?
It's 174 units and 313 parking spaces for the residential portion of the site.
And plus an extra 40?
Plus an extra 40, so it's about, it's about just under one and a half, I think, did my math right on that? There's one data flows out.
1.4.
The code requires for the Sheldon at least 1.5, but only 1.25 of those had to be on site, and this exceeds what was done for the Sheldon, and it works the units in transit-oriented development in that fashion. And again, this is a conceptual plan by an architect of what could be done there, and certainly the developer, who we hope to be able to introduce you to shortly, will work, I think, with you on their vision and how that meets your vision. Unfortunately, we're not quite under contract with this developer, I can't disclose it, they aren't quite yet, we can tell you they're very experienced, very prominent in your metro area, and are very excited about the possibility of bringing this housing to downtown Suffolk. We, I would hope to say we're gonna introduce them potentially at your July 26th workshop, but now I'll say, hopefully at your August 9th meeting, I will be on vacation, and you'll no longer be on Zoom, so you'll hear from others if it's on August 9th. Before we open it up to questions, just wanted to touch on two other items that are of great importance to Avon, as we go into this contract and go into this process. The first is that, I know 50 Lotfayet, there was a proposal for overlay type of zoning, which is very different than the TDD zoning that was done for the Sheldon, it's sort of a multi-step process. I watched the planning board meetings where they gave you back a recommendation, saying, don't do that yet, wait for the comp plan, I know you've retained consultants, historic the comp plan, up in my conversations with Rob and Mayor and Deputy Mayor. Our understanding is you're just as excited about this concept as we are, that it's kind of a different animal than 50 Lotfayet or even Sheldon because of where the site is, a little further from the train station, but still walking distance. So, we'd like to hear your thoughts this evening, if you're willing to share them, on processing a petition that we're hopeful the buyer will come to you with, I mean, in conjunction with us in the fall, to rezone the property TDD, similar to the Sheldon, and probably ask for a little relief on the density that was done for the Sheldon, which is 65 units per acre as of now. We penciled it out for this site, which is 1.87 acres, it comes out to 122 units. The concept plan was 174, again, that was just an architect sort of saying, here's what I think can be done on the site. We're not sure what the right number is for the developer, but I'm sure they'll have very strong feelings about that, and I just wanted to give you a heads up that we anticipate that in addition to asking you to rezone the site TDD, there will likely also be a request to consider tweaking the density for this site, or under certain circumstances that distinguish this site from the Sheldon's. So I just wanted to put that out there, before I sit down and stop talking, I'll remind you, as we talked about a lot in 2019, the key to this whole deal is that this piece of property is released from the pilot agreement, which still has another four years to go, so it can be sold. Right now, title is in the IDA, which is how they structured those deals in the early 2000s, now typically it's more of a lease and a sublease, so in order for Avon to actually convey title to a potential buyer, it has to be released from the pilot, which means this board, as well as school district and others, have to sign off on that. And timing-wise, we would ask that you consider that in conjunction with the zoning amendment, to allow the developer to purchase the property and move forward with their vision. So, I'll stop there, it's a lot, but I wanted to sort of get that all on the table, and we really would love to hear, if you flip through, you'll see some nice renderings of some, again, concept imagery of what this could look like, a section showing you the height, and then that last page, this is my idea of this particular architect, of what could work for this site, with what's around it, and the modern, energy-efficient, new building height for this location. So really, that's what we had to say this evening, we would like to hear your questions, but also your thoughts on process, so we can report back to the potential buyer, hopefully that this board will enthusiastically receive a petition to rezone the property and move it forward.
Who would be wrapped in on the rezone? I mean, I know the process...
It would be a joint application, because Avon still owns the property, but we anticipate the developer would drive the process with the support from Avon, but we would have to be a co-petitioner as property owner.
Yeah, they can, they can, they can talk about how the petition is forwarded, but I'm sure it'll be Avon and the developer as contract purchaser.
Exactly. And the density on the units per acre, we're up from 65 to 122, and what was the, what was the acreage on Sheldon? One acre?
I think it was around one, right? Did it?
I think it was a little more than one.
A little more than one.
It was more than this. It was smaller than this.
Yeah, it's all of this.
Right.
Was it 65 to 122, or was it?
No, 65 units per acre.
Right.
That was what was on for TDD.
But you mentioned 122, so I just wanted to know, that was...
This site at 1.87 acres penciled out to 122 units, so the current...
That's what it should be.
Well, that's what it is under current.
Correct, right.
We anticipate that this developer will likely ask you to consider increasing that, under certain circumstances, for a bigger site like this one, that can handle potentially...
I'm sorry, the acreage is what?
1.87.
Oh, 1.87.
Yeah.
When the Sheldon was all said and done, how many units do they have per acre?
Uh, well, there's 90...
92 units, I don't know.
Yeah, I believe they're just, they're right at the 65, I believe. Full of outlook.
And the parking ratio's on page three, 179 without considering the 40 with the 40 extra, it goes to 2.1.
1.79?
Yeah.
At the 313?
Oh, thank you, right.
174?
Yeah.
That's what have us getting towards, though.
Right, that's just work, work.
1.7, I'm sorry, what did you say?
1.79.
1.79.
1.79?
Without considering the 40.
I like the plan, I like the, I like what you've been presenting and working through, and navigating through everything that we've been navigating through, from the pilot to the COVID, and listening to what the village needs are and wants are. I don't know if the board has any other questions or comments?
I'd like to, I'd like to see it happen, I'm not gonna commit to a 174 units, but I like the concept and I would like to see it happen.
Okay.
So four floors of residential?
Right.
About 100, so how many units per floor? 174?
Four.
Or what, something like that?
Yeah.
40?
I think they drew it up as, the architect drew it as kind of a mix of...
Right. One and twos and studios?
Yeah, a few studios.
I think very few studios.
A handful of studios, primarily ones and twos. It's a fairly typical mix for a transit-oriented.
And then with this being, maybe we should just go through like, what amenities, they would have just a quick review to refresh everyone of what the plan may develop into, I mean, we spoke about the rooftop, we spoke about...
Yeah, the architect, yeah, the architect presented, again, I have to keep saying this all conceptual.
Yeah, conceptual.
Very modern amenities, potential rooftop, outdoor space, pool, gym, library-type space, heating-type space, or sort of co-working space, what you would expect from a modern apartment building, what tenants demand in 2021.
What would you anticipate is the ratio of two-bedroom, two-one-bedroom, two...
I think that's in the chart that I can't read, the references that I forgot.
I can't read it with my glasses on, so...
Well, okay, I feel a little bit...
Yeah, here, so that's also in the third page. It's got four studios, 75 one-bedroom, 95 two-bedroom.
Got it, perfect, thank you. Could you describe the balconies that may or may not be on the building, so that will each building or each unit have a little outdoor access?
I know the architect, so I cannot describe that, but, but again, if that's something, when the plane comes in from the developer that you want to see, I'm sure you can express that to them, but we can pass that along, so if that's, you say that's something you'd like to see? Yes.
I think we mentioned it before, and they talked about doing them on the courtyard side, the internal, inside.
Yes. Right on the exterior, due to the fact that what people put storage on them and...
Yeah, it wasn't what you wanted, what people want, generally, to say.
Right.
Right, I think the pool was gonna be in the middle, right?
Yeah.
Sort of wrapped around the outdoor amenities.
All right, so what will be our next steps moving forward?
Well, they wanted to get a feel from the board, I mean, the next step would be for them to make a formal petition for the zone change, and go through the whole secret process, and everything else, and send it out to the planning board, so I guess today is just, you know, are any board members saying absolutely not? Is everybody saying, yeah, it seems okay, I'd like to see more?
Well, is it a straight, is it a straight zone change, or is it a TDD?
No, it's a straight zone change.
We'd be asking, I anticipate we'd be asking to rezone the property, return zoning to TDD, which is already on the books for the Sheldon. Perhaps with a zoning text amendment to allow increased density under certain circumstances, and that'd be a back and forth with what the board is comfortable with or not comfortable with. But at its core, it would be, change the zoning match to say TDD on this property, just like it was on the Sheldon in 2015.
And agree to break.
The Sheldon, but the Sheldon...
And agree to let this property out of pilot, exactly.
To the railroad, but the Sheldon would be matched right up to the railroad.
And this site actually backs up to the train rail.
Yeah, but you're not taking that into consideration.
I would hope not, unless you're buying the rails.
Right, so then that means all those parts are gonna move out and they're gonna drive down.
Oh, this is walking distance to the train station, for a young guy, I'm waiting for your roll.
Those in Suffolk walk?
No, they do.
In transit-oriented is considered a quarter mile.
So what's the, what is it? What's the distance between here to there?
I don't know.
Okay.
I think it's about a quarter mile, but I don't really have that much, but the intent is for it to be transit-oriented, we can find that out certainly.
But that pertains also to a bus, is that correct? Bussing.
Sure.
So, the bus lines up and down 59.
Right. Yeah. So I guess I'll just, I'll try to find out one more time, because tomorrow morning, Michael's gonna get, actually tonight, you're gonna get a recall asking how the meeting went.
Oh, sure.
For the potential buyer, I guess our concern is, the planning board's recommendation on the overlay was, don't do anything until you adopt the new comp plan, which we all know will take 12, 18, 24 months.
Right.
And we have a little bit of a concern that that, the planning board might get the same recommendation, which you could take or leave, I guess we're asking you as the decision-makers, are you comfortable, if this project is sort of a little different than the overall village, the overall downtown, are you comfortable that it'll be processed and not put off till after the comp? That's sort of our concern, based on that planning board's implication on a very different project, I think we all have.
I'm comfortable with the...
Moving forward.
Steve?
Yeah.
Thank you. Joe?
I can, why would we do a comp plan? We're doing so many units all at once. And we don't even have a traffic study, and we're asked to give an opinion on something that we don't really have all the details on, so I am concerned about that. I'm not saying it's a bad plan, or it's, the parking is not where we thought it would be, but that's a whole lot of units to put in this little village. And I highly doubt that people on a rainy day are gonna walk from there, all the way down, under... all the way down under Chestnut Bridge and walk all the way up the stairs. So I have some concerns.
Charles?
I'd like the answers to Joe's concerns and them being favorable, I'd like the plan to go forward. But I also Google direction this site to the train station and it's exactly forty-five miles.
So then we have to worry, does that take us out of that zoning opportunity? Do we change it? Because now it's not a quarter mile, it's half a mile.
Well, it doesn't have to be, I think.
Right, so then we have to change what we consider a a teen town.
No, no, you're just saying generally speaking from a planning perspective.
Oh, I thought it was. Oh, no, no, I thought that was a requirement.
Of course you have the bus on fifty-nine.
Right.
Which is transit.
Less than a quarter.
No, no, you're saying that people take the bus and that's still transit oriented.
Yeah. That's within.
There was nothing to do with the train station, but just even the bus there, it's still transit oriented.
Okay, that's very helpful information. I will tell you, Avon did go out of pocket to get traffic counts funded before school ended because we wanted to have some current data and also the traffic consultant was able to get some historical pre-COVID data. So we're going to be working with the petitioner to share that information. We didn't want them to lose the summer because we can take traffic counts in the summer when school's out. Often a criticism, which I understand criticism of all school wasn't an exception to those counts. And we, a lot of projects I'm working on now, the traffic consultants have been struggling with. The numbers of traffic is certainly coming back, we all see it. But they're also often going back to some historical data from twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen to just comparison accounts they had. So we were proactive about that to make sure we had some data that the petitioner can use when we're ready.
So you're asking for this change before we know who the developer is?
No, not at all.
He's just trying to get a feel.
A feel.
Are you a hundred percent no? Are you, oh, let's see what we have, you know what I mean? Almost like fifty lock, yeah. Seemed like some were a hundred percent no, so. It doesn't, you know, that's kind of the feel.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
They have the bigger competition, they have the.
Right.
Yeah, that will take, I think we'll take them some very direct, like a vision together, put their studies together, have their vision of what they like this, what was on the property. So I think you I think you would probably like to come back and introduce them, but then a formal petition, I think it might be.
Didn't fall sometime.
Yeah.
We've shared all this information with them and all of your feedback over time, so.
I'd like this to like fully, to be fully assessed and all that, not like Sheldon, which is a pilot, you know. I like that because the village needs more of those.
Agreed. I'd like to see it move forward due to the same fact that you bring it in, local economic development into the community. Bring in gradables, you don't need to use the water and sewer. It's just a plus for the village, it's suffering for the residents, for the taxpayers.
And for us to continue moving forward.
And you're taking an underutilized asset and maximizing it.
Yeah.
Well, we like.
Not only underutilized, but you know, somewhat, no offense, please, somewhat unattractive currently. You know, making something that looks in these pictures very attractive.
Particularly compared to the research and development.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm talking about, I think the main building looks great.
It's the role of the history.
I think the research and development is great, but I think the nail, the factory, it's not great looking building. And I don't mean any of that, so.
I don't think we deserve.
To be able to live here, walk across the street and go to your job in April.
With Avon, walk to downtown, spend money in the restaurants and stores and have that authority.
I think it's a slam dunk for us, you know, especially, you know, there's been some talk, you know, we've had at other meetings about changing uses of Lafayette Theater, you know, and
Right, I saw that.
This would tie into that very well.
Sure. You know, to walk to a venue like that is amazing.
It would really, it would really be great for the village, I think, all those things.
I live in, like, Plains, but the Capitol Theater in Corchester is a similar historic theater. And there are so many apartments now kind of built up around that refurbished theater. It's a similar phenomenon. You know, restaurants are doing great, you have, I just went back.
Fantastic.
It's a similar, it's a train station, it's actually a very analogous downtown with a lot of historic buildings with the theater, with the train station. And I think the same thing is starting to happen there too.
I've been many times to the Capitol.
It's a great venue.
It's a great venue.
Very good. Okay, well, we really appreciate having the.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will see you soon much. Stay well. Great seeing everyone in person.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good night.
Good night.
Chief. Good evening, everyone. I have a fairly brief update in the spirit of keeping the contract here. So so far the month of June, we responded to just over eight-hundred-and-twenty calls for service. On the community policing side of things, we begun accepting negotiations for the fall Daraaki season. We're hoping with COVID restrictions being relaxed, we're hoping things trend in that direction and we can provide a fun, safe environment for the kids to get back to most normalcy and a good season of Daraaki. As far as our police station renovations are going, we're basically in the final stages. I would say probably ninety percent of our flooring is in. All our furniture is in the local warehouse. They're just waiting on us to give them the okay to deliver that. Once that's complete, you know, we're hoping later this week or next week, we have a couple more small offices to finish up and that should pretty much complete our project. And that's all I have, unless anybody's got any questions.
It's nice to hear. I can't wait to see it.
Completely, it looks completely different already.
Are you operating tours?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm good, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Ms. Kathy Mills. Got to do this in person.
Hi, it's, I'll keep my brief as well. Two things I'll mention tonight. Tomorrow, Tuesday, the twenty ninth, we have kids' family fun night. If anyone can join us down at Chestnut Street at Hatterley Park. Isabel Hatterley, whose husband, they call him, is the doctor, will be there. She's very excited to listen in, so everybody's welcome. Hatterley Park tomorrow.
Have a good Saturday.
No, six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Yes.
Can I actually talk more about the event, what it's going to?
It's just going to be a family fun night. We put out information on kids back at school. People are going to come, just have fun. We're working with the ice place next door, ice factory, we're going to have ice for the kids. So, you know.
Bubbles.
Bubbles, we've got lots of bubbles. So it's going to be a nice night, so.
Looks like bubbles.
It almost like bubbles.
And then, I'll, I'll do all the updates on Monday night. The discussion for Clifford Theater, if we can kind of later sign the contract for the musical director and the director. We can start Clifford, the word is getting out there. So I think I described the other day that I'm we have four plays, what they're going to do in one month. So kids on Monday are going to practice on Monday and the last Monday is going to be play, and Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, they're so excited. Anthony, who we worked with before, is fantastic, he's excited, and it's going to be a good time, so. Got a great, great week of kids getting out of Capitol Theater.
So we have that for this evening, the resolution?
My heavy, my heavy.
Yeah, so I have the resolution authorizing Anthony Cole to serve as the Clifford Theater twenty-twenty-one summer program director at a cost of two-thousand-two-hundred dollars. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Oregon.
Do I have a second?
Second trustee Alford.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to action. Next, I have the resolution authorizing Helen Conrad to serve as the Clifford Theater twenty-twenty-one summer program musical director at a cost of one-thousand-one-hundred dollars. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Oregon.
Do I have a second?
Second trustee Alford.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to action.
The last thing, we have our first concert this Thursday, Reflections, the Big Men's at Big Z's Book. So it's an exciting evening, Reflections, it's always beautiful concerts, it's a set appeal.
Thank you.
Go things. I have a question. How is, how did the pool do this year as far as registration compared to previous years?
It's going fantastic. Numbers wise, in the past, we had eight-hundred in two thousand and nineteen registered. Right now, as of just today, I think there will be a difference, we have seven-hundred registered. It's hard for this new one to do the more of this.
Okay.
So I believe we're going to be very close in how long it's going to be that that makes them sound like they've got a lot of nice little families coming in. The on-air pool is not opening, so we have a few people that can run over to go there, but it's going very well. So between length and eight-seven-nine, we're doing all the registrations are still going well, so.
Good to hear, thank you.
Since we're on the subject of the pool, I was going to bring this up during trustee time. I would really like, especially with the weather being the way it is, that all village employees get the opportunity during the week at lunchtime or after work to go hop in the pool, take a dip, and let them do what they need to do whenever it's their work day.
And then volunteer farming.
Well, yes. I'm sorry, did I not say all of our public service, which I include? The firemen as well, policemen.
APW.
Yeah, everybody.
Everybody in the pool.
Village employees. And I understand the fire department, but I consider you guys.
I'm all for it. I don't think it's ever been done, I think it's great.
Sure.
Now, would it be an issue if any employees are not residents or anything like that?
No, they're employees of the village, they suffer.
So you're saying issue them a pass, like, or is it a free swim call? Like, is it a swim call or?
Well, they all work the same shifts and everything like that, so can you just, don't they have to check in with a list? Like, do you have a list?
Yes, we have a list for fire, for everybody.
Great, so yeah, we just have a list when they check in, you know. Joe Hunt, he's not here, but Joe Hunt wants to take a dip during lunch?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's not a lot of work to pull that list together, is it?
Is that actually, are we doing training? We have a list. Do you have a list?
Yeah, we have a list.
Especially in this weather, let's start it tomorrow. Somebody send an email out.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do they want to vote on if they want to go to the pool?
Yeah.
So you're just thinking eligible for them to go, not during working hours, but only be on breaks and.
Break, lunch, yes, of course.
You don't have to spend the day at the pool.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying they get to spend the day at the pool, because it's ninety degrees.
What about, you know, an employee coming on a weekend when they're not scheduled to work?
On their work days when they're.
Only on their work days, okay, I'm just trying to clarify.
So we're going to have a list of all employees that are welcome to use the pool during lunch or after work.
Or if they're doing a night shift.
Only on their scheduled work day.
Or before if they're doing a night shift, there you go.
Yes.
Or if it's after a fire and it's a weird time, don't bring in.
Yeah, so I'll show you through.
Okay, perfect.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Rella?
Evening, board. I was just curious, like, it's today, like, ninety-five degrees, and I tell my wife I'm going to the pool because it's free, she has to stay home.
She's going to be mad.
She's going to be mad.
Yeah.
I don't want to can't work straight.
Killing these walls, you're killing these walls.
I have three items. I just wanted to mention real quickly that the one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar grant for a backup. Charles is already working on it, he's already received a quote on it, which is right in my office with the grant award. So he's going to report on that, we should be acquiring that shortly. We'll be talking about that probably, maybe a bit later. Working with State Senator Reitland Nummick, we put in a request for a garbage truck. Two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, it'd be a sand grant. The actual award would, we would know this year, but, you know, we want to pay for it, that's a model of the state and that's me, because that's going to be the coordinator, the sort of paper for this for this fund. It really would be until the spring of like twenty-twenty-two. Once again, nothing's guaranteed, you know, we put in for the full amount, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, you get nothing, you get the two-thousand, you get a hundred thousand. What, so we're just sort of waiting to see. Going to thank Lisa Ann, who was very helpful today in getting the paperwork over to the senator's office and working with the community. Chief of staff, I think, all, so thank you. Put in today, community development block grant twenty-twenty-one. In April, as before you, we put in the twenty-twenty community development block grant. It's delayed in the spring of twenty-twenty because of COVID. Okay, so they delayed that until this spring and put it in for the West Maple Avenue sidewalk project. Total cost of that project is three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Back in the spring of twenty-twenty, it was estimated approximately one-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand dollars. The cost of materials and labors, as we all know, have basically tripled. I mean, you hear about it on the news, you know. The cost of a two-by-four-by-ten, it's gone from basically three dollars to ten dollars. So the new cost is three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for that project. So what we did was, with the twenty-twenty application that was put in April, we broke it up to a phase one and a phase two. The maximum award for this grant is two-hundred-thousand dollars. So what we did was, we kept the first phase one aspect at one-hundred-and-ninety-eight, so we asked for one-hundred-and-eighty, ten percent is contributed by the village, okay? And now this application that went in is the remaining one-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand dollars, okay? That's how much is needed, we pulled, so one-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand would be grant money, fourteen thousand would be village suffer money, okay? So basically ninety percent of the project, if we get it fully funded, would be funded at the three-hundred-and-fifty, ten percent contributed by the village to suffer. All right, we should know about these awards hopefully within a couple of months, both of them, okay? And when the project actually is done, we do it simultaneously, both phase one and phase two, they'd be back to current. This was, you only were given fifteen days to put in this application, the most recent one. Typically, we're given two-plus months in order to do this. This grant is complicated, and I got to have two citizen advisory committee meetings, I got to have a board resolution, I got a public hearing. I've got to do the application, I've got to get quotes, Charles, I've got to do estimates, you know, pictures, a whole nine yards. And the Rockland County Office of Community Development realized that this was a very short timeframe. Thus, they're allowing for the public hearing and the resolution to occur after the submission of the application. So that will be on the July twelfth meeting. The public hearing notice is being done by Rockland County Community Development. So Lisa Ann, you don't have to do anything on that end, just try to make sure we're on the agenda. That's it.
Thank you.
And they had the public hearing here?
Yes.
Yeah, they had the regular board meeting, like you would have a regular public hearing. They just took care of the notice from the newspaper. What they do is they put all the municipalities in one little notice.
Right.
And they say, you know, suffer and apply twelve to seven P M.
Right. Pals, vices.
Yeah, Spring Valley.
Perfect, thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
Ms. Zawiki.
Good evening, board. The first item would be an application repayment for Dewberry Engineers for the hardening of the water treatment plant and the backup power for critical facility products, projects in the amount of, excuse me, twenty-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars and fifty cents. The next item would be application repayment for Covino and Sons for the Wayne of the Sidewalk project in the amount of ninety-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty dollars. Item C is twenty-twenty-one right-of-way improvements project that involves curbs on Sagamore and ADA ramps on Bonniere Circle. And that cost, that bid came in at two-hundred-and-four-thousand dollars. Any questions?
That was the only bid, that was the only bid, correct. The next item is the
the phase, phase eleven?
Don't you have any more?
Do you want some Tic Tacs?
Let me get through it. Okay. It is, uh, the, uh, phase eleven improvements project. Thanks. Hope that helps. Okay. So again, slow down. Phase eleven right-of-way improvements project. That includes, uh, twelve roadways throughout the village. We, uh, the board has the list. That bid was for eight hundred forty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Charles, was that the only one bid?
Yes. It was the only one bid. Now, just, uh, historically, we pray that helps. Thank you.
Oh.
Excellent.
This is our list is a phase eleven project. All previous phases to, um, this contractor was the low bidder. Although he wasn't the better this time. All previous, um, phases, he was also the low bidder.
Where do we have the list of streets that would be covered by that?
I'll give you an email.
I have, I have a copy of that. Oh, here it is. Does that balance to you a copy?
Sure.
Sure. Hopefully, we can get a couple of kids.
Uh, well, it's publicly advertised and, um, we really have no control over how many kids come in.
Thanks for the copy, though. So that was the reason why.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, uh, process as well.
Thank you.
Uh, it's not on there again.
So, yeah, just a typical, um, procurement policy and publicly advertised and, uh...
We try the mobiles.
Yeah, I think we had, um, total of four contractors actually picked up documents. We don't think that's a part of it. Any other questions?
Charles, can I ask, are the firehouses included or they missed out again?
Missed again.
Do you look on front of the...
So one, um...
Actually, I'm glad somebody falls. I mean...
I'm glad you brought that up because we do have the alternate for, um, the roadway improvements. The alternate one is for the community center. Okay. Uh, the next item is for an RFP for what the design engineering survey. So on this item here is, um, we have a grant, Fred, to work, to get a grant. We probably got the, uh, department or review from the county and see where they can go. Um, so in this project, the, um, configuration of the parking lot is very irregular. So we need to have a survey done. We also need to review the drainage, um, in the parking lot and develop the documents. So what I'd like to do, if possible, um, would be to get the boards to authorization to proceed with that RFP so I can get my, I would request the RFP to be back on the ninth prior to the twelfth meeting. So just trying to move this project along, uh, because obviously, uh...
Does the surveying and the RFP come out of the, uh, grant money?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we have a certain line item for that.
Yeah, we have a hundred, two grants total, a hundred seventy thousand and two hundred fifty dollars. And then, once again, we say the village should contribute ten percent, so seventeen thousand more. But, uh, yeah, this is, first, we'll put in for reimbursement of the grant funds.
Okay. Charles, just from my education, do you need permission from the board just to do an R, just to get an RFP?
Oh, I've been, I've been asking.
You don't get a resolution, you're just kind of asking?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if, um, I mean...
You can get a resolution if you want, but I'm saying, do you ordinarily do that?
Up to the board, man. I just want to be able to proceed.
Michael, you don't usually do that, right? Resolution authorizing issues of an RFP is not required. Right? So you're just asking for more of a...
Yeah, just to be aware and be able to proceed.
Okay.
All right? And then, so, uh, again, we will, uh, put that together and have that, uh, to be submitted on July ninth. Okay, the next item, um, is an amendment, uh, Resolution Number Thirty-five of two thousand and twenty-one to include backup power for critical facilities amount of forty-three thousand and twenty-three, uh, twenty-six dollars. So forty-three thousand, twenty-six dollars. That'd be added to that, uh, that resolution. Somehow the dollar amount they make is moved into that resolution. And the next item is to, uh, ask the mayor to appoint, um, Aramis Morris to Assistant Operator Grade Three Waste Water. Mr. Morris, most recently, uh, obtained his three A operator's license and has, uh, and in doing that, there's a certain experience required, duration of experience required. Also taking a test, uh, the E R C T C test, which he has passed. He also has been approved by, um, the county personnel for acquisition. So we'd be, uh, asking for, uh, appoint Mr. Morris as Assistant Chief Operator Grade Three Waste Water.
So I had the discussions with Charles and I also had a discussion with Aramis in regards to it. And it'll be a provisional appointment. So that would be, that would be noted on the, um, on the resolution. I think it's a good idea. I think we put together a good plan moving forward for the wastewater treatment plan and then rolling right into, you know, doing the appointment and then rolling into the RFP for wastewater treatment.
Yes, that's, uh, actually, the next item would be, um, to, um, prepare an RFP for the wastewater treatment and operational services. Um, I'd like to have that due by July nineteenth. Uh, do back, uh, and we'll discuss it for the August meeting.
Perfect. You've been asking that for a long time. Excellent. On both of those aspects, actually, the board's been asking for it, so that's good news.
And then there's... Who's gonna draft up the RFP?
I am.
Okay.
Did it seem like it'd take time for any responses?
Nineteenth.
It's already in first next week. I, I don't know, you tell me. It just seems like if you want to get more responses, maybe a little more time.
Well, I mean, I, yeah, we certainly could because of the, um, I was looking at the calendar when I was putting the agenda together. Um, I mean, that's something that we could push out a little bit. When is the next week about?
The ninth, so if you made it...
Okay, so we, we certainly could push that out a little bit. Yeah. We certainly could push that out a little bit. The other one that we spoke about for the...
No, I, I'm just saying, maybe some people don't think they have enough time.
More time, generally, you get better response.
But we'll have it out before then. When do you plan on sending it out?
I plan on sending it out this week.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so the last item, um, and I believe the board received that and I, um... This is the, um, recommendation letter for contract two and, um...
Delaware?
The Delaware, yeah.
No, I'm trying out. They have it.
Okay, I have, I only have one copy lately. Okay. So this is, um, again, Delaware Engineering Recommendation for Contract Two for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project. Bids came in and, um, the, um, we had four alternates. Um, and the fourth number, the alternate number four is one that we're gonna hold off and do that separately. We'll fit that together. Delaware's gonna prepare the documents for that. Uh, we, after reviewing it, we believe that we can get a much better price. Uh, and, uh, hopefully, we've got a job as well by doing it there. And any questions?
I'm glad you brought up that price because at the last meeting, I was pretty shocked to hear that suddenly we have three million dollars of additional money to pay. You know?
The wastewater?
Yeah. So hopefully, we have to be mountain from nine million to twelve million seemingly overnight. Like, we just had Delaware Engineering here about two months ago at one of our meetings and they said it would be a nine million dollar project. And all of a sudden, at the last meeting, it sprung in us that it's now a twelve million dollar project.
Yeah, well, um, I think we might have touched on it last time. We, um, engineer, anybody who actually characterizes engineers' estimates, engineers sit down and bear their estimate and it's just purely an estimate. So, um, the true cost of a project is what the bids come in at. And the whole way that we have to get that project and what we're paying for.
Is there any benefit to rebidding some of the things that seem a lot higher all of a sudden?
Actually, the, um, no, typically, there's not a benefit rebidding, um, because now the numbers are out there and you either have less people dead or the number just gets skewed.
Nobody's gonna leave money.
I actually, in, in the environment of right now, I think, although the cost was higher than anticipated, I think based on the environment they were coming in, the numbers aren't there. Just that it's just, everything is very, very costly. Um, you know, there's very long lead times to get equipment. It's unpredictable. So many things are unpredictable, so...
Is there any benefit? So we have bids for overall pieces of the project, but is there any benefit to splitting it into more separate pieces and maybe rebidding just a portion?
Well, that's what we decided to do after evaluating the four alternates. We looked at the three, um, alternate one, two, and three, and, uh, the costs seem to be fair.
Yeah.
Um, and that's why we pulled out that fourth one. We need to do a lot better on that side. All right? Any, uh, any other questions? I'm glad I got that loss of you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
When you get the final numbers, can you email that to the board?
Uh, which ones you put?
In other words, when you get the final numbers from the different contracting companies, if you give us the prices and then the total, we'll see the change from, let's say, twelve million approximately to maybe with the new amount like the...
Yeah, you talk about the wastewater project, right? I, um, if we didn't do that, I'll do that. I thought we, I thought we did send that out, but...
But this is for the new, the new bids and the new prices.
Yeah.
So if you do with the new bids and new prices, we'll be able to see.
Yeah, so what do you have a, um, actually, I think it's attached here, right? If you look at this, uh, that, um, recommendation letter from Delaware, uh, the second page, I believe, I didn't summarize there. Is that, you're looking for something beyond that?
That's it, man.
The second page. If you want, yeah, like, we did look and see, is there anything you want in addition to that? So we had, uh, for example, on the, uh, electrical, we had four bidders. Um, and on the general, we had five bidders. You can see how, how the numbers, uh, total summary.
Yeah, that's what I wanted. Okay. All right. Okay.
I think that...
So we might, might go with chief's bids.
Oh, absolutely. Actually, the, um, uh, there is some benefit in going, yeah, what I wanted to discuss because we didn't make a firm determination here, but there are some benefits in, um, going with, obviously, the overall priorities. There'll be some other benefits as well. We can discuss that next time.
Well, I have the resolution here to appoint Aramis.
Oh, okay.
You want to proceed with it?
Okay, absolutely.
Okay, so I have the resolution to appoint Aramis Morris to the position of Assistant Operator Grade Three A Wastewater, whereas Aramis Morris has the necessary satisfactory qualifications for a grade three A operator of a wastewater treatment plan according to the requirements of New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. And whereas Mr. Morris seeks appointment with the approval and recommendation of his department supervisor to the civil service position of Assistant Operator Grade Three A Wastewater and will sit for the next scheduled competitive civil service examination for that position. Now, therefore, it is resolved that the board trustees hereby approves a provisional appointment and employment of Aramis Morris as Assistant Operator Grade Three Wastewater for the village of suffering. Such appointment to become permanent upon his selection from a duly established list of eligibility of eligible to such position as certified by the Commissioner of Rockland County Department of Personnel. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Alford.
Trustee Alford.
Second trustee Corrigan. I kind of wish we would let Aramis know that this was happening because we all worked as a board to get him done and hired and, and he's missing it. That's most unfortunate.
We'll watch the videotape.
He'll be happy.
I, I understand he'll be happy.
Congratulations, Aramis.
That's a general.
Yeah.
The board worked really hard to get this done, so...
So the first was, uh...
Me and Joe.
Yeah. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion has.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations, Aramis. Thank you. Mr. Janino?
Yes, uh, there, one of the things that Charles had mentioned was the roadway project at phase eleven. So, you know, that started last year and the project that the board had adopted was five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in total. So now with the, uh, additional streets and so forth, the work that had to be done, that total amount is gonna come to about one point, one, one million, two hundred and ten thousand dollars in our estimate. Part of that is gonna be CHIPS money, which is going to utilize, and Charles had sent me an email just part of this meeting, but I have to work out with him and Fred about how much CHIPS money would be able to be used. But in short, I believe that we're probably also going to need a bond reso or an amending bond reso to cover the remainder of the money for that project. And so we'll have both of those things for you. In other words, an amendment to the project and an amendment to the bond reso, as well as how the project will be financed, partially in CHIPS and partially in, uh, the bond money. So for our next meeting. And one of the things I wanted to update was, you know, that the fire chief had mentioned the two vehicles and we mentioned the, what's known as the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one. People refer to that as ARPA twenty-one, very common. And our particular funding from that comes in the form of what is known as the Coronavirus Local Finance Recovery Funds, C L, uh, F R F. And basically, that money is the amount of funds that was allocated out of the plan, the act, the ARPA twenty-one act, that would flow down to us based on our population and, uh, the formula that was used by the U.S. Treasury to distribute that money. We believe that we are getting, according to the formula, approximately one point two million dollars over two payments, one of those payments to come sometime this year, not too far to the future of this year, and then the rest of it next year. Now, keep in mind that all of this is constantly in flux, as you can see from the newspapers and the media, that it changes almost daily in terms of information we get. For instance, for us, we're known as a non-entitlement unit, an NEU, whereas a state is an entitlement unit, counties are an entitlement unit, and metropolitan cities over a population of fifty thousand or more are entitlement units. So in New York State, we're one of those non-entitlement units and our funding comes from the federal government into the state of New York, then directly to us. The state is working out how to get us that money. And the state received their money on May twenty-eighth. By law, within thirty days, they should have distributed it to all the non-entitlement units, but the state asked for a thirty-day extension, which they were granted, and give them time in order to calculate and work out all of the formulas and how the money would come to us. We've already been advised that they're going to send it to us by electronic funds transfer, just as they do with the state aid when they send that to us annually. And so we're going to expect that sometime around, or before July twenty-eighth, we would get our funding. Now, the state can also ask for another thirty-day extension. That's why I keep everybody in mind that the money may be coming in thirty days and may take another thirty. So it could be July twenty-eighth, it could be August twenty-eighth.
And that would be half of the money.
That would be roughly six hundred thousand dollars, right?
And how is that earmarked? Like, what?
Okay, so the question was, how is that money earmarked? Well, the first thing that they do, they have a formula that we can use... Well, the first thing that they do, they have a formula that we can use that determines how much quote we lost because of coronavirus. And to make it short and simple, our fiscal year ends May 31, but they want everybody to calculate what they lost as of December 20, December 31 of 2020. And so they give us a formula to work out in our non-COVID year, how much did we make? And then they give us an escalator amount, 4.1%, that says, assume you would have earned 4.1% more in revenue than you did in your last non-COVID fiscal year. Bring that number up to December of 2020, and then that's what you should have earned. Now go back and recalculate what you actually earned. And the difference between those two is the funding that you can use on any public purpose, except for debt. You can't use it to pay debt. You cannot use it to pay off a retirement bill, but you can use it for most other things. Public safety, public works, you know, general government purposes. We did the calculation, and if we are correct in our calculation, our loss was $648,000. So that's probably more than that first half payment that we would get. And so, in looking at that, one of the things that we looked at, we were discussing, for instance, as you know, the police vehicles, and how the police vehicles are, have an agent fleet. And I worked out with the chief a replacement plan based on the number of vehicles they have, and a replacement of the patrol vehicles every four years. But after four years, they can go then and be used for a vehicle that would last six years and replace the unmarked vehicles. So the unmarked vehicles, pretty much, they have a six-year life. The marked vehicles, they get about four years before they run out of warranty. Number one would commit them to very expensive bills. So what we could do is this, we have in the budget this year to purchase one police car. What we determined is that we would need three police cars every year for four years, and then on the fifth year, you would get two police cars. We can use this money to ease ourselves into that budget process. This year, we have one vehicle in the budget. So what we can do is with the ARPA money, buy two additional vehicles. That gives us our three for this year. Next year, we put in the budget for two police vehicles. And then we take one year worth of the ARPA money, or one police car worth of the ARPA money, and buy that, third vehicle. The third year, we're on a regular plan, we buy three vehicles out of the budget. Now, with the chief's cars for the fire department, there's two of those that we put into the budget with the idea, well, actually, we didn't put it in the budget, we put it, I should say, yeah, we put it in the budget to buy them in the capital project, and we could buy those as well. Now, the fire chief's vehicles, they get about 10 years out of those, I think, right?
They're 11 and 12 now, so.
11 and 12, so they get 10. So that's a good way to use some of that money for that purpose. The other one, although we're going to get possibly a grant for the garbage truck, we could use that funding to help supplement the payment of the garbage truck, and I'm not sure how many garbage trucks we need. Charles, how many do we have?
Well, we have one on the water and one additional.
So that's going to replace the two that we need. So we'll be good with garbage trucks, either through the grant or a combination of the grant and the ARPA money. One other purpose for that money that'd be very useful to us, one of the things we found out during the COVID emergency, and this is one of the things directly related to it, as you know, we had the Zoom meetings, and part of the issues we've had, and part of the discussion we've had, is about making sure that we can respond to the public very quickly, that they can communicate with us, and we are dealing with a very ancient infrastructure for computers here. So the networking throughout this building was put in probably sometime in the early 1990s. And if I actually gave you a little tour of what it looks like, you've got everything from wires that really shouldn't be there hanging out of a wall that get plugged into something. Right back here, Kathy knows this, with the pool computer in the back, they were having some problems with the computer. It's a loose wire. So the fact is, it's old, it doesn't carry the same signal strength that it should, and so we were looking not only to do the village hall, but the community center, the firehouses as the main areas to get that upgrade. So those are some ideas of how we can spend that $648,000.
And there's other things on the list?
And there's other things. There's plenty of other things. You have to remember that, as long as it's a good public purpose, we can use the money for that, right? And again, you can't use it for debt and other things. Now, the rest of the money, because that $600,000 is the amount that we are free to spend the way we want, as long as it meets that good public purpose. The rest of the money, they're rather specific on it. It's either got to be water treatment, wastewater treatment, infrastructure for cable, which we don't do here. I mean, if a community, some communities don't have good cable service, so you could have that installed in your community, but we don't have that issue here. So those are the two main ones, is the water and the wastewater.
So which one comes first? The one that we can.
Well, that $648, that's, we could use, yeah, we would use that as the way we think it should be spent first.
That's the first one.
Yeah.
The second one is more identical.
For a couple of reasons, right? Because a couple of reasons. Number one, right now, you can only spend the money on the water and wastewater infrastructure type things. One of the issues there is, you don't know how this is going to change next year. They may open it up and say, well, you know what, you can do roads and bridges and a bunch of other things. They're already talking about the possibility of expanding the other infrastructure, which obviously is something very expensive, but very well worth putting in. We have certain deadlines. Once we get notified of the money and we receive the money, we're going to have so much time to commit to spending the money and so much time to actually spend it. Now, actually spending it goes out a couple of years. It's like 2024 or something like that. But the trick is, if you don't commit the money by a certain date, or you don't spend it all by a certain date, it goes right back to the federal government, so.
Might you have mentioned to me once that the water meters on people's homes were something that had not been upgraded in a long time?
Right, actually, that's on my agenda here too as well. I'll get to that in a minute.
So we might be able to use this money for that?
Uh, we definitely could. We definitely could, but, uh, one of the reasons why we kind of defer back from the border and wastewater, just for the right now, and for quite a few years, there's been a lot of grants and aid for water and wastewater treatment. In fact, they increased it in the last couple of years on the state level with the WEA grants and other grants, and it's going to build some more. But you hear about, Fred talking about it, and us looking into it and getting it, actually. The other thing we get is very good financing through the environmental facilities board. So if we can continue on that path, I'd rather see the money spent on something where you don't have that opportunity to take advantage of. So, let's put it this way, when the money does come in at some point this year, you know, we'll put before your plan to say, this is what we think and how we should spend the money.
Can we have that a little bit earlier than later, and can we have some of that grading from you of what the different things that we can put it towards?
Oh, sure, absolutely, absolutely.
Can we be, like, kept in the loop completely on different conversations?
Oh, yes. As a matter of fact, I was going to wait until we actually received the money, because one of the first.
Like it before we received the money, so that we don't have to make a split decision?
Oh, you won't have to make a split decision. No, you won't have to do that. Just because the money comes in, the first thing that's going to happen, we're going to put it into a project. As a matter of fact, just to let you know, the state of New York hasn't even told us accounting-wise how we're supposed to account for the funds when they get here. So we've already predetermined how they probably will tell us. We're going to put that money into a reserve account, so that it's always going to be tracked. One of the things the federal government's very good about is saying, we give you money, you better be able to show whatever penny went for, how it was paid for, whether you went out to bid for something, the canceled checks and all that. So, yeah, definitely. It's not that we're going to get the money and start spending it, and.
No, I didn't think that. I just, the way I understood it was that we have to make a very quick decision.
Oh, no, no, it's not that quick. It's like within a year, you have to come in. So, and by the way, the other thing I should have mentioned too, we've obviously done repairs and improvements to the village hall in response to COVID. Those are definitely expenditures. They allow you to go back to March of 2020. And if you can document that you spent money as we did, for instance, like plexiglass, whether you bought masks and equipment for protection, PPE, that sort of thing, that is all as well.
Brings me to a question. I noticed that the downstairs, the, like, the purpose office area where the residents normally pay a tax vote and whatnot, it's currently under construction, in carpet and that kind of thing, it needs job. Is that, I mean, I know that we as a board didn't vote on that. Is that just routine stuff? Like, where is that being budgeted?
Well, that's going to come from that coronavirus money. Basically, what happened, people used to walk into the village purpose office, and so now they're going to have a service window, or two service windows actually, so that people don't walk into the office, they work from outside. That obviously is part of reforming of the entire office. And while they were doing that, the carpeting was very old, and when I saw that stuff came up.
Probably needed the work. It was more, I was just surprised to see work being done without any kind of board approval, that's all.
So, I, well, I think, I don't know that repairs.
Some of the repairs and maintenance of the building come out of the budget line that we have, so the reimbursement from the budget from repair building maintenance line, I believe it is.
Yes.
So that's how they manage that.
Okay.
Yeah, so. And that reimbursement, like, that money will come back from the American Rescue Plan, which is eligible for that.
I, I just, you know, I feel it'd be helpful if board members would have to move that work to be done, that's all. That's all.
So, yeah, that's just kind of an update on the ARPA 21 money, and there's always, by the way, like I said, some of this stuff changes almost weekly. We get new, we just got a new notice from the Treasury Department today, and I haven't had a chance to read it, it came just before the board meeting. So it was, again, how the money can be spent, a lot of frequently asked questions. The federal government has a whole website on it, because there are so many questions to it. So the other thing I have on the agenda here is the capital project for the Wayne Avenue sidewalks. Charles had let us know that there was going to be some additional rock blasting needed, as well as some concrete, what was originally designed to be grass areas a little bit hurt. And so that's going to require an amendment to the project, and the funding source for that would come out of the general fund contingent account. So you have a resolution for you to amend that capital project for Wayne Avenue sidewalks by $35,000,900. And if you gotta adopt that resolution today, I think great, because then we could put that into the books, so when Charles goes and replaces purchase orders.
So I have the resolution here, Amending Capital Projects 2018-003, 2018 Wayne Avenue Sidewalks. Do you have a second?
Something has to be moved.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve 35,000.
Do I have a second?
Second trustee Corrigan.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Okay, thank you. The next item I have on here is a resolution, this goes to trustee Corrigan, who had just asked about. The water meters in the village are about 50 years old on average, and the older the water meter gets, the slower it moves, which means even though it's pushing the same amount of water, it's not reading properly, and we end up with a high unaccounted for water loss. And I've been discussing this over the past few months with Charles and with Stanley Korinski of the Water Department. And the other thing is, the meter reading that's done currently is done by sending units there on the meters, but they can only send a signal about, I think it's 100 yards away from where they are. That requires somebody in a vehicle to go by with special reading equipment, pick up the signal, come back with the readings, and then we process them. Now, there's always misreads for a lot of reasons, and two things happen here. One is, it takes about a week and a half, two weeks to get all of the readings in and processed, and then we deal every six months. And without a doubt, somebody calls us up and says, I have a high water bill, and I don't know why I have a high water bill. And, I mean, much higher than usually. Nine out of 10, it's because they had a running toilet, or a faucet leak, or something, something else that happened. And so we're not alerted in any way, and I wonder if they're not paying attention, doesn't realize that they're using a lot of water, and then we end up with issues in terms of payment. So, what this system would do is, number one, we would be able, for $1.5 million, we'd be able to go out and replace every residential water meter in the village with a new meter. We would also have installed a cellular reading system where one or two antennas in the village at significant locations would be able to pick up 95% to 98% of the meters in the village continuously. This allows for an awful lot of things. It allows us not only to read the meters without anybody going out unless they can't read that meter from the signal. The other thing that's really probably more important is, if somebody, even just one customer, has excessive use or underuse of their normal billing, we can alert, that system can alert us, and we can alert the customer that they may have an issue. Maybe they're filling their pool, and that's the first time they have a swimming pool, and it's, it's all. But it's a nice thing to be able to do, is to tell somebody, you may have a leak because you're using a lot more water than you, than you usually do. So, what's before you is a bond resolution, and we got an estimate to do all of this, by the way. And it's kind of like a close shop because we deal with one type of meter, it's one brand of meter, and so you have to stick with the equipment that's there. You can't switch out to a new meter, because the reading equipment wouldn't work with it. So in any event, we have $1.5 million to do this project in this bond resolution. It may be less, one of the estimates is labor, and the labor, we would go out separately to bid for, so it may actually come in less than what the estimate was originally made up for. If, there's also the possibility, and we'll be talking with Fred about seeing if there's grants available for this, the financing, again, we would look to the EFC, and again, it could be one of those things that the ARPA 21 money ultimately will be a good investment for.
That sounds very good. I have a couple of questions. I know, I'm going to say, you know, I've lived in the past 30 years. I'm going to say, if you ever think about 20 years ago, they installed a system that worked based on telephone lines, and of course, that became obsolete as people dropped their telephone lines in favor of some things. Understood. Then they switched to this new service, which you say they drive by and so forth and so on. So we've spent money, you know, let's just say 20 years ago, we've spent money, let's just say, 5 or 10 years ago, something, I don't remember.
Well, I think it was longer than that, because I remember when they put the telephone system in, it had the, I was here at the time, it was probably around 1985, somewhere.
It could have been, because when I moved in my house, they used to come there, you know, twice a year to read the meter, and I moved in in January 1992, so this had to be after that I switched to telephone.
I know they were putting it in when I was here, and I left here in 91, so it may have been your house.
But when did they do the drive-by?
I don't know the specific, it sounds like it's in the, the, my knees, or whatever happened to it. I was here then, so I'm going to have to check.
So anyway, so I just, you know, I know we spent a lot of money on, probably on both of those systems. Now, this new system that you were proposing, is it similar to the system that was put in effect, I believe we talked about some months ago, that we took a vote on at the water plant itself for usage, keeping track of usage based on cellular.
No, that was alarm system.
Alarm.
That was an alarm system. We have certain water facilities around it, and the alarm set off to do something.
And that was cellular.
That's cellular, yes.
You voted on that system.
Yes, that is cellular.
Does that come through?
No, that replaced the copper one.
Yes. And this is some sort of cellular system?
This is as well cellular.
Now, is there some kind of ongoing, besides the initial installation, is there some sort of ongoing fee to utilize that system?
Yes, there is. It's not that high, the other thing, number one, it's, oh, we actually.
For some reason, I'm thinking like $5,000, something like that. Was it a loss?
So this will eliminate us, like, driving around, taking the readings.
Right.
More accurate readings, accounting for the loss of water.
Right.
Something that's been looked at for a while now.
And it also helps the homeowners have the benefit. It also helps them.
It also helps the homeowners at the end of the day if there's an issue.
Yeah.
And it allows us to do a lot of analysis that we can't really do right now with the current system.
Right.
You know, in terms of usage and rates and everything else. Tony, however, asking that you adopt that resolution.
I have the resolution authorizing projects 2022-001, water meters and meter reading systems. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Barone.
Another second. Fred.
Okay, I thought I made a motion, what else?
Dollars. Okay. Joel and Fred.
I have some questions. It's not, it's not usually a discussion. How much of a time period of talking for the payback is typically something of this nature, sort of 1.5 million dollar bond?
Well, we, we normally go with a 20-year bond.
So, how, you know, typically, whatever, how would that affect our budgets going forward? You know, is the paying extra finances to cover this?
I would, I'll come up with, I'll find out what that amount should be, again, it's gonna be depending on the rates.
Right.
And it goes through the water rates, not the battery, the water rates.
I'm, I'm just concerned, obviously, because, you know, for the taxpayer to pay, you know, how much it costs. I don't really want to disclose, I don't have that information, you know, money.
Yeah, it's, again, it's not on the taxes, it's gonna be those that use it for.
Yeah. Oh, no.
This is a money-saving system, because it, and what's this, well, is it worth waste?
It does. Ironically, though, that could cost, look, I'm not saying it's a good reason, but it could cost us money if we find out that this will do.
What is the difference if we put on this resolution tonight, when a workshop, we're supposed to be discussing everything and digesting everything, and then we go to a village board, meaning some public hears it?
Yeah.
We're doing a lot of voting tonight, I'm just a little confused.
I'd like to, because I agree with Joe, I, I would trust you for it.
Unless there, unless there's a total advantage for doing it right now.
Well, the lead advantage is, this is subject to a permissive referendum, so, once it's adopted, the public has 30 days to, to enforce a permissive referendum if they want to, and then we have an additional 20-day stopper period. So in other words, it's a 50-day period before we can even order the system.
Given, given my druthers, I, I mean, before I would, personally, I mean, I don't, I can't speak for other board members, but before I'd like to vote on spending $1.5 million, I'd like to know how that's going to affect water rates, whether it's 10%, whether it's 5%, you know, what's the typical rate going to go up to pay for this? That's, you know, maybe useful piece of information.
Yeah, one of the things you have to keep in mind, too, is one of the reasons why we're looking at a system like this, right now, our water rates haven't been reevaluated probably for 30 years.
Yeah.
And there's been a lot of discussion about, are they equitable, are, are, you know, are we doing the right thing in terms of how they're structured? Right now, the current reading system doesn't allow us to really go into that with any reliability. A system like this would allow us to do that, because we could very quickly identify who are heavy users of water, who are the lighter users, for instance. We have constantly using condos and co-ops that have shared meters, residential, but because they're over a certain limit, they get charged for the commercial rate.
There is one thing that Michael touched on, and elaborate on, is the fact that these meters are so old, they're under, we're under charging essentially, my average is 20 to 25%. So we could figure that, if that is accurate, you know, we're looking at a, you know, pretty vast return on investment. So, but, yeah, it's still, it's 25%.
Yeah, I don't, I, I think it's a bad idea, I just hadn't realized if we're voting on this, and I guess the understanding should be when we read the agenda now, when I saw a resolution, my assumption was we were going to be talking about the resolution that was going to happen on Monday. So now, I guess we go with resolution that means that we vote tonight, and then...
This discussion, talk about.
Okay, that would have been, okay.
I mean, I, I feel like a bond reso should be a public hearing, I don't know if it's meant to be so, but I, I could not.
Well, that's the point of the permissive referendum, is that people objectively...
I think it's a good idea, I'm just, in a bit different format for the meeting tonight.
I would prefer, I would prefer having more information before you vote.
Let's ask, sorry.
No.
Well, it needs for to pass the bond resolution, so if there aren't more people here tonight than we just told, or told more than wants to.
No, I, I think it's a good idea.
I'm willing to, I'm willing to go forward with this, I just want to know how it affects the average homeowner, I, I don't feel like voting on something without more facts, and all we have is this is what we want to buy, and not, this is how we're gonna pay for it.
Steve, Steve, the problem with that is, as Charles mentioned, there'll be a lot of water savings.
Yes.
So actual, you know, correct meters that we...
Correct, but, so what that means, let me just interrupt you, Justice Solomon, let's say that my water meter hypothetically is under reporting by 25%. I don't know if that's correct, but let's just assume that. That means when, when we go forward with this, my water bill is gonna jump up 25%. And I'd like to at least have that information, among other things, including the cost of funding this, before I put my name on, on a resolution, that's all. I think that that's, you know, due diligence, I think, for the judge for that.
Well, don't you think for the judge?
We should, I'm not saying I'm against this at all, I'm saying I'd like numbers before I put my name on it, that's all I'm saying.
And what I'm saying is, I think for the judge, we should have the right amount to charge and the right numbers.
I, I agree, I'm 100% agreement, but I'd like to know what the cost of this is on a typical home and a typical...
What I was saying was, I think it's very, I shouldn't speak for you, but it's very hard to figure out that equation, you know, how would we ever know, because you don't know the laws.
Right, the most I can give you is that, because I looked at a million and a half dollars, and what critical interest rate that we might be able to borrow the money at today, and what that debt service looks like every year, and how that affects the water, but I...
Which I can't think of the computation, like Charles said, about how much extra money was Mike making from your...
Yeah, he really, he really can.
That would be, that would, that would happen to the following year. I'm talking about, like, first, I'm just talking about the actual root cause of the cost, which would be $1.5 million, has spread over 20 years to the average homeowner, I'm just curious how much that will affect their water. That's all I'm asking. So if you could possibly have an estimate, I'm not looking for finite numbers, I'm looking for a rough estimate, and then I'll be happy to vote on it.
Sure. Okay, so I will just table it.
Unless we had the motion and the... Unless you had four votes. All right, so let's take a vote.
Can you give that number just quick?
It has to be a raw poll vote, anyway.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do.
All right, I got 1.5 million divided by 20. How many houses are in the...
2,400, roughly. 2,400 units.
Businesses, probably. It's like $30.
Well, that's the number, that's not bad. See, that's what I was looking for, if that's the number, that's not bad.
But, that's Trustee Barone doing it on a calculator.
So what I'm saying is, if that's the number, I, I would vote as...
This is the treasurer right here, making a recommendation, making a recommendation on the water loss that we've been suffering for many, many years now. That water loss impacts the residents overall.
I agree.
No matter what.
We have, we have a regular board meeting in two weeks, and if, if Mr. Junino, lightest, accurate, rough guesses, I'm ready to vote. I mean, we should do it at a board meeting, though.
All right, so let's take a vote, a vote now, since we introduced the resolution, we have a first and a second. Trustee Alfred.
I'm gonna vote no.
Okay. Trustee Savoness. Trustee Barone.
Yes.
Trustee Corrigan.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion has been taken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, this is a discussion, you know, Real Term Energy. Periodically, you've heard about the LED streetlights for the village, and, you know, Charles has been working on it for a while himself, Phil Hunt's no longer here, but, and actually Fred was involved a little bit on it as well. So the, the issue is this, is that when we were first approached with this, actually, it was probably around 2015, the year 2015, we had the money, and this required an initial investment, even though I had a quick payback, we just couldn't borrow the money to get this done. That's the first thing. The second thing was, if you bought the lights, you would have to maintain them. So what this is all about is the streetlights, not traffic lights, but streetlights, and what they call the Cobra heads that are there. If we had bought the LED lights and had them installed, we would have been responsible for replacing them, and that would mean we'd have to have the crews and equipment or somebody to do it for us. So that was the second reason why we really didn't look into this too seriously. Subsequent now, though, we're in good financial shape. The second thing is, they've changed dramatically in that, yes, you purchased Cobra heads and the lights, but they also offer among, with that, a maintenance contract that could be managed by a company that's very capable of doing the work. So if a light goes out, if something happens, you replace it. Real Term Energy is probably the market leader in this area, and the other one that you might think of is the Long Island Power Authority, LIPA. But LIPA is a utility company, it doesn't do the soup to nuts kind of work that Real Term Energy does. The short story is this, is that Real Term Energy, and you, I believe you have the handout from it, it basically has submitted a proposal that shows essentially a six-year payback, where whatever you invest today, for the energy savings that you would have, not only now, but going forward into the future, you'd have a six-year payback to it. They, they project some financing of it, we'd have to work out whether we want to do that or five years or six years. We go five years or six, probably even go with a short-term note. The bottom line is, it's only up for discussion, I really do want the board, because I just have looked it over, if you have any other questions about it, just let me know. I know that there are other companies out there that do this, but typically, Long Island Power Authority is the big one that's out there. There's a couple of small ones, but...
Mike, when we first looked at this O&R adder program, where they were only going to do 20% a year, does this company come and do them all at once?
Yes, it'll do them all at once, and the second thing is that, they do a lot more than what Orange Javala would have done. Orange Javala would have simply swapped out a regular light, like a, whatever they had, halogens or others, for an LED light, but they would only do so many a year, if you recall. And you never really, you're still paying for the maintenance of, of that Cobra head and the light. So what this does is, you're actually buying the Cobra head and the light, and you, you have the maintenance of it, so you're not paying that maintenance fee to Orange Javala. What this company, Real Term, will do as well, they will geomark every light that you have, so that sometimes in the inventory that Orange Javala has, we may or may not be paying for a light that we own, or vice versa. And, and so that's one of the things they'll do, they'll geomark them, they put them, they have apps available, so that with that app, you could identify a streetlight that had a problem, and they could be notified, the repairs could be done very quickly. So it's a lot of good things, I, I just don't want to spend a lot of time tonight, I mean, you can read through the proposal, we can certainly ask any other questions.
Well, the current street lighting, which is indescent or whatever, how does Orange Javala charges for fill us, based on the usage, do they estimate it, or is it metering system?
No, they, they actually have a certain wattage that goes through the light system, and they fill us on the, not individual lights, but just the total amount of wattage that we actually use.
So if we change the bulbs to something more energy efficient, it will show up on the...
Yes, that's what that proposal shows, as a matter of fact, is that, in fact, as you know, we did LED lighting here, which actually paid off on our, and the community center, although that happened just prior to COVID, so we really can't tell whether it had the better effects, but I'm sure it did. One last thing about it, too, is, the other thing the company, Real Term, will do, is when they go out and look at the lights, there is a certain warmth to the light that will be used at an intersection versus a residential area, so everybody isn't under bright light, and nobody's under a dim light, you're under the lighting that's necessary for.
That's what you have to wonder about.
And we'll be voting for this on, on the next village meeting?
If you wish to, yes.
I would wish to.
All right, so that's, that's it for me on the agenda, thank you.
I have one other question on that. So what, so if they're changing out the Cobra heads, what, what do they do with all the previous Cobra heads, and bulbs and things like that?
Recycle them. And they're responsible for disposing of that.
And there's no benefit to us selling them somehow to other municipalities that might still be using them?
The proposal calls for them to take and dispose of them, so I don't know that could be involved.
You don't own them.
Oh.
That's true, yeah. Right now, they're Orange Javala's.
So I just gotta go back, I've got to...
All the...
Except the law, except the Lafayette Avenue.
Yeah, because we can't get a light bulb changed, we have to call O&R.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, so I have three items that say discussion, but I am gonna ask for a vote, but I'll explain the line.
Oh, my goodness gracious.
The first is, there are three, proposed three local laws. One, the fire inspector discussed with the mayor and myself, we have, the village has its own section of the code regarding grills, which conflicts with the state fire code, so he has asked that we just repeal that current section and go with the state fire code. So, you know, we'll discuss it more when we do the, the public hearing, but it's really with respect to, like, condominiums and the markets, correct? Is that the issue?
So they want, so they want to put grills back on?
No, no, it would be...
The code is in the property.
Right, whatever the state code is, in terms of grills and their distance from the building, et cetera, is all according to state code. So that's number one, so I'm gonna ask, should I ask for a three at once, or do I just do it?
No, individually, right? Oh, they...
I'm gonna...
Go ahead.
The, the second one was, is a little more detailed. Instead of public hearings, it went chapters 1, 205, and 266 of the village code regarding penalties for offenses, I'll try to make this quick. As a chief of the test back in, beginning of 2020, the discovery rule in the state of New York changed, meaning if a person gets arrested, there's a certain timeframe within which discovery has to be turned over. District attorney's offices across the state and police departments have all coordinated to be able to beat these new deadlines, and the, it was actually amended somewhat because the deadlines were kind of tight. So, in the middle of last year, they cut, they changed it. One of the changes was that violations that did not carry jail time do not have to go with the stringent discovery timeframes. The reason that's important for the village is, it's one thing for the police department, they're there, they have this system, a new system. Local municipalities, and this is the reason for the change, local municipalities, it's difficult to, you know, kind of keep up with that, so they, people are still entitled to discovery if you have its own code violation. However, it would be a little later, it would be in the event of trial, and it'd be in, you know, a certain timeframe before trial. 99% of our cases are, we're just trying to get compliance usually, and they're resolved before trial, so it would save a lot of time and money and effort on the part of the building inspectors to not have to, you know, be concerned with the discovery, the strictness of the discovery. I think, you know, we've always said it's open files, someone wants to look, will be copies, et cetera, but it's just an opportunity that the state legislature actually put in for lower-level offenses to not be, you know, to not be kind of strict guidelines. So, what I'm suggesting is, you know, discussing in other municipalities, I've been here doing prosecutions for about 16 years, and zoning, and we've never had somebody threatened with jail, so it's really, you know, something that, that was just kind of in there over the years, and given the legislature's change, which was kind of to address these, but they, I don't think they really realized that, you know, they, they have like these minor 15-day jail term terms. Of course, not minor, we're doing it 15 days, but, so, I'm gonna, I'm suggesting that any violations not carry jail time, and that would be amendments to those codes, to those chapters of the code. So, and then the last thing is, the one we've all been discussing about noise regarding Lafayette Theater, where you can have exceptions to the noise code, this would be a public hearing to amend the code, to allow the exception. We've been going back and forth with possible conditions, we're not in agreement necessarily on conditions, I would say, but this is the first step, amend the code, if they come in, then we can hash out the conditions. So, I have three resolutions for, and the reason I ask for this is because it's August 9th, and I usually like to give 30 days, no, we don't necessarily have to give 30 days, so if we wait the two weeks, it will be too late. So I would ask that we vote on this tonight, on all three. Any questions? Any questions?
Would say you want to throw an extra vote in on...
Okay. So that's the rest of them.
All right, so we're going to go, we're going to set, set a public hearing for August 9th at 7:05 PM.
Yes.
Propose the local amending village code to repeal chapter 154. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Alford.
Do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Savinus.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
For that public hearing, it's set. We have to repeal the other...
No, 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 let's just copy the local law.
Okay. All right. Next resolution, motion to direct the village clerk to publish notice and to schedule a public hearing to amend chapter 1, 205, and 266 in the village code, penalties for offenses. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Barone.
Clear.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. Next motion to direct the village clerk to publish notice and schedule a public hearing to amend chapter 175 of the village code out of noise, set for August 9th, 2021, 7:25. Is that too much of a timeframe in between?
I think we'll, we'll still be here, we could skip that. Do you want to make it seven?
Yeah, because then we, we don't have to hold off, so make it 7:10. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Alford.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have all the local laws. Trustees. Good, good. Mayor. Have the resolution awarding Nelson Pope Boardies for Professional Services to prepare the 2021 Comprehensive Plan for the Village of Suffering and authorize, and authorizing contract execution. This is, this is the resolution this we're voting on. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Barone.
Do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Savinus.
Any further discussion? Mr. Magrino will be preparing the contract?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. So I know it was brought up in the past that the minutes were not being approved, so we have the minutes attached here, would the board like to move forward on...
It's up to them.
Yeah, I have the resolution, if they would like, if not, we'll hold off till the next board meeting. Would you like to move forward with the resolution?
I guess so.
Okay. Of the, uh, approval of the minutes, Board of Trustees meeting June 7th. Do I have a motion?
Trustee Barone.
Do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
All, uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I have a resolution, uh, accepting a letter of resignation of David Hamilton, zoning board member effective as per his letter of resignation dated June 12th, 2021. Do I have a motion to accept the letter of resignation?
Unfortunately, Trustee Corrigan...
He was a very competent member.
He was an excellent member.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor of that?
Will he be in the chair of ski down?
That's what you put in there.
So that's a letter, Mayor McUnus, I'm said to resign my position of the, on the Village of Suffering zoning board of appeal effective June 2021, I have taken a new job, and that is going to take me out of town for long periods of time, and my schedule is going to be unpredictable, so I cannot guarantee I can attend board meetings on a regular basis. I feel the situation is unfair to the village, and for that reason, I'd like to step down from the board and allow you to find my replacement. It's been an honor to serve on the zoning board for the past 13 years. I'll miss collaborating with my fellow board members in the village courts and the attorneys to do our part to improve the village. I wish you continued success and hope, and look forward to seeing you at Great Days and Suffering in the months and years to come. Best, three dollars, David Hamilton. Thank you, Dave, thank you for your 13 years of service to the Village of Suffering, thank you. Next is the, yeah.
Yeah, the, the vote heard took place in the...
Yeah, yeah. For the appointment?
Yeah.
No. The next one. So there's an open seat on the zoning board, um, I have someone in mind that's already on the zoning board, so we'll just make that determination at the, at the next meeting.
What do you say, uh...
Hey, huh?
Yeah. Wolfen.
Wolfen. Well... Board members, no?
Yeah.
Um, no. But I mean, there's two Wolfens, that's why I'm saying...
So, can you just throw us an email out on that?
There you go.
You don't want to say his name out loud.
Well, because if there's a controversy on the appointment, you have an L O, you know what I mean?
The board would like to have you considered.
Okay, and the next thing here is for a discussion on regards to the Suffering Chamber of Commerce, they are planning to host in the Village of Suffering, excuse me. Okay, no, I'm trying to read the email. We, the Suffering Chamber of Commerce are planning to host in the Village of Suffering on September 19th between 10 AM and 5 PM, our annual street fair. So they are looking for approval from the board to host the annual street fair on September 19th. So we'll be putting that on the agenda for next week, two weeks. That's all I have. Okay, next, I will make a motion to go enter into an executive session.
What are we going into executive session for?
Legal.
To discuss a matter of litigation, that's correct, uh, litig, and you also have personnel? Possible. Okay. But definitely, uh, litigation, potential litigation.
Yeah, litigation, I'm willing to...
Well, it could be a...
A litigation matter, I emailed the board earlier today, something like that.
Yes. That would be the only thing, right?
I believe so.
Okay, perfect.
Motion on it.
No, there'll be further discussion.
You're coming back out?
No, no, there'll be further discussion, other than the litigation.
I'd like to know what that is.
We're going to go into executive session. You can only go in for...
Okay.
It's for personnel.
For litigation.
And personnel? Yeah. All right.
So we need a motion, and, and the test pass?
Yes.
I'd like to...
I'm willing to go for litigation, I don't feel any need to discuss, uh, personnel decisions. You have any motion, also?
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the board will be coming back to...
Right, we'll be coming back to, we'll come into regular session, but...
But no vote?
No votes. Motion to exit executive session?
Motion, Trustee Alford.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to, uh, adjourn the regular meeting. Oh, I'm sorry.
Workshop.
Workshop, had to rent back into regular meeting, or adjourn.
We exited workshop, so now we're here.
Okay. Motion to adjourn, I'm sorry.
Then we're here.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.